Gosh, I'm the only one on it. Okay. They need to know why? Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir.
You look familiar. I've seen you before.
No, just a facsimile.
Something you could live down or live up to. Go ahead.
All right.
Hello, James. Can I take this one while you take that one? Thank you. This is the, you've got the public comment.
I know you, don't I?
I think you do. I know you.
Nice sharing some history with us.
Yes. Let's see.
It's too bad. It's too bad. It couldn't have turned out better.
Well, you know, what I want is for the city to move along.
Should I have done more? Should the public have done more?
Well, that's up to you.
As I'm in the outside, I think I have to quote the New York mayor. I am who I am, but you know, we need the public to do more.
Does it say, I'm trying to get this sign. I want to sign that one, too, if I could. Did you sign it already?
Yes. I did already.
Okay. I just want to read.
This is mine.
Okay.
Oh, you want?
I just want to see one number. Oh, you got a next one? Thank you. All right, we are doing number.
And let all that stuff get to her.
Of course, she did tell me she talked with them. And they worked things out.
Oh, okay.
I told her what none of us was going to go to no meeting.
Oh, yeah, you know, I mean, and I don't know why they sent it to everybody, you know? It was made out to you and Mike. And they sent it to all of us, too, you know, just to create some kind of an illusion.
Yes. We are moving resolutions three and five.
Moving them where?
They're going to be, pull them off the, they're not ready.
Hmm, where's everybody?
So Dan has had COVID. This is why I'm wearing my mask. I tested negative even three hours ago, so, and have been for the last four days. I mean, I'm triple vaccinated and, you know, I've got all the boosters, so. Uh, 6:02.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Pontiac City Council Meeting for October the 14th, 2022. The meeting is now called to order at 6:03. Councilman Parker, could you please introduce this evening's invocation?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Our first person will be giving our dedication this evening is Pastor Chad G. St. Rose of the Fox Boulevard.
Good evening, everyone. If you'd stand for prayer, please. Our Father, we thank you for this beautiful, beautiful day and for the weekend that was lovely. We thank you for the fall and the Christmas. And Lord, I know people look at it as death, but if you don't die, you don't have life. And so, Lord, we just thank you for your cycle of life. And we thank you for the new life that this board, that this city council is bringing to this city. We ask you, Lord, that you bless each one who's here. Bless each member of the council. Give them wisdom, calmness, and courtesy. And help them to do things the right way. And we'll be careful to thank you, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for, at this moment, as we remember those that in our community has lost since the last time we meet. Christian Ava Arinka, Edward Bojois, James Butler Jr., Dorothy Hill, Karen Jordan, Matty Luster, Irvin Pewett, Canolia Shaw, and Willie Thomas. Please remain standing for a moment of silence at this moment. Thank you. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis. Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. President, you have a form.
Uh, thank you, Clerk Doyle. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to excuse council members from this meeting. Uh, President McGinnis and Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford.
Some of.
Support.
It was moved by Councilman Goodman and supported by Councilman, who made that?
Nicholson. Nicholson, yeah.
To excuse Council, Council President McGinnis and Councilwoman Rutherford from tonight's meeting for personal reasons. Any discussion? Hurry, no roll call.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. Motion to amend tonight's agenda, uh, to remove item three, which is resolution to approve contract, uh, to Ursus Art Jesus Enterprise Geographical Information Systems Software.
Some of.
Support.
We're removing that.
Mm-hmm. We're removing that item. It's been moved by, um, Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we remove item number three from tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Nicholson.
President Protem, was that a request from administration?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hurry, no, can I get a, a roll call on that, on that motion?
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
And Goodman.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, can I get a motion to remove item five from tonight's agenda? Resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment.
Some of.
Support.
It's been moved by, by Councilman Goodman and seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we remove item five for tonight's agenda. Any discussion? That also was requested to be removed by the administration. Roll call.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda for tonight?
Some of.
Support.
The motion has been moved by Councilman Parker and seconded by Councilman Goodman to approve the amended agenda for tonight's meeting. Any discussion? Hurrying, no roll call.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. At this time, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Some of.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker. There's no discussion. This is not a debatable item on the consent items. Uh, the consent items include September 23rd, Facilities and Properties Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, September the 26th, Law and the Court Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, September the 26th, Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, and September the 27th, 2022 City Council Meeting Minutes. At this time, can I get roll call?
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Uh, thank you. That motion carries. Is any elected officials in the audience that like to take a moment to speak to us?
Uh, good evening, Protem Carrington, City Council, Mayor Grimal. Uh, I am the vice chairperson of the Charter Commission. Just want to make a quick announcement that on the 27th of October, we will be having our first listening session in the Pontiac City Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. Uh, this is an opportunity for the people to come tell us what they would like to see in the charter and some things that we can improve on. So again, that'll be at 6 o'clock on October 27th. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Charter President Kermit Williams. At this time, we have an agenda address.
Uh, first upon agenda address is Mr. Chuck Johnson. And what item will you be speaking to this evening?
Thank you very much, Chuck Johnson here. Uh, item number four on the agenda. You know, I know that General Motors left our city some time ago. However, they didn't leave us in terribly bad shape. But I noticed that the city has been continuing to buy GM trucks and cars, mostly trucks. And I noticed on number four, we're looking to buy a couple of new pickup trucks. And I'm thinking that maybe the city should try a Ford product because just from my experience over the years, I've always found Ford to be, uh, over and above any GM product you can buy. As a matter of fact, all the, uh, construction people around the country, and especially here in Michigan, they've always used Ford trucks. Uh, I think that the city should take the opportunity to, if they're going to buy a couple of trucks, at least give Ford an opportunity to show their place here in our city. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Kermit Williams? I'm going to public comment. Uh, I'm assuming Dr. Deidre Waterman.
Good evening. I came to speak to the Youth Recreation Center, um, items on the agenda. The youth center, as I reviewed to you.
Excuse me, um.
Yes.
It's not on the agenda tonight, but you can speak about it.
Number six and number 43. It's, I wrote it on the sheet. I believe those are the numbers.
Number six.
Number six is, uh, okay, go ahead. It is, but it's, we actually, we actually, go ahead, I'm gonna let you speak.
And number 43. I believe that's also a youth, but can you start me? Forget, I'm getting my train of thought here. Thank you so much, Mr. Protem. Uh, okay, I'll use what's remaining.
You, you, are you, you're ready?
I am ready.
I interrupted you, so when, tell me when you're ready.
Well, you interrupted me. Um, okay, great. Thank you. Uh, and I came to speak to the youth recreation item. Uh, as you recall, about two weeks ago, I came and talked about the legacy projects that the Ninth and Tenth Council before you and my administration had left for you. And one of those was the Youth Recreation Center. You know, the citizens voted for Youth Recreation Center on 2018 with the idea that they wanted to have a center to replace the four centers that was gone. And we know that you are considering reopening the center that I opened with this council. And you have two places in consideration right now. Wisner School and McCarroll. I have another thought for you, too. But I just wanted to let you know because there's been some thought because when I opened and kept the, uh, youth center open at A25 Golf Drive, which the children loved, they loved it. Um, you talk about, you know, you've had seven or eight hundred, nine, seven or eight hundred kids in the youth program for the summer, this past summer. And, but they got to go to 14 different sites. The thing the citizens voted for, and then were paying a millage for, is to have a center. And that's what we had at A25 Golf Drive. The children loved it. They loved the gymnasium. We had all kinds of activities, plus we used all the other facilities in town as well. The problem with having 14 different sites is that the kids got to run all over town, and so they don't have maybe a whole day of activities like we used to have. Uh, we had in the summer, adults, uh, parents could bring their children in. They could stay for a whole length of time, and then they could go. And they got to socialize, they got to be with their friends, they got to do other things uh, that a center offers. So the other thought I had is that, um, the, uh, that the Hayes Drone Center was up for sale a couple of years ago. That might be something you can consider because it's a recouping, a youth center we used to have. It also has a swimming pool. It's been beautifully reconditioned by the previous owner. It has all the fields around it. And if it's up for sale, that might be something to consider, too. But Wisner was my first choice before. It was the council.
That's your time.
That picked A25 Golf Drive.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
No more agenda address.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Goodman. At this time, uh, we have city council resolutions. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Some of.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman and seconded by Councilman Parker that we approve the resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Any discussion? At this time, I'd like to turn that over to Councilman Goodman.
Uh, so, good evening, everyone. Uh, so I worked to write this very lengthy, uh, resolution. But the, the importance of this is obviously that we recognize that uh, we as people inhabit occupied land uh, for obviously hundreds upon hundreds of years that was taken from the stewards of this land long before the colonization of Christopher Columbus and many other European people. Um, and so this resolution is, is to acknowledge, uh, in the same way that many state governments and federal government, uh, federal government has, acknowledging that, uh, Christopher Columbus did not discover the land that we occupy currently. And that for long, a long time before this, and arguably time after, uh, did indigenous people occupy this land. And the many things that had to happen to get us to the point where we are today, where many of those people, uh, face many forms of systemic troubles and discrimination, uh, as well as, again, just recognizing, uh, our country's actions to get us to this point. And so this is, again, to formally, uh, recognize and acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, and just to where, uh, read the, uh, be it further resolves and resolves, uh, is that the Pontiac City Council and mayor understand colonization not as a historic event, but as an ongoing structure predicated on the elimination of indigenous life land. It contends that the celebration of Christopher Columbus and his alleged discovery of indigenous land celebrates the colonization disposition, uh, dispossession of indigenous peoples throughout the Americas. Be it further resolved that the Pontiac City Council hereby recognizes the second Monday of, in October every year, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Pontiac. And be it further resolved that the city of Pontiac shall strike from city calendars and websites all references to Columbus Day and replace them with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, be it further resolved that the city of Pontiac shall utilize the second Monday in October as an opportunity to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people of this land and to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of indigenous people of our region and to stand in solidarity with indigenous people elsewhere. Uh, and be it further resolved that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect on the ongoing struggles of indigenous peoples on this land and to celebrate and learn from the thriving cultures and values of the Ottawa, Ojibwe, and Potawatomi and other indigenous peoples, uh, what they contribute to, contribute to communities throughout Michigan, the United States and the world. And be it further resolved that, uh, city of Pontiac encourages other businesses, organizations, public entities, uh, to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, October 10th, 2022. Um, so that's that.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Goodman. At this time, any other discussion? Hurrying, no, can I get roll call?
Carrington.
Uh, yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
The next agenda item is a city council resolution recognizing Diwali Festival of Lights. Can I get a motion?
Some of.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, supported by Councilman Goodman, that we approve the resolution recognizing Diwali Festival of Lights. At this time, we'll turn the floor over to Councilman Goodman.
Uh, in a much less long-winded explanation, uh, Diwali is a very important religious holiday uh, to many Indian, Indian-Americans, both in India and abroad. Uh, it covers, uh, three different religions, including, uh, Hinduism, Jainism, and Sikhism, uh, which all has a representation of many different things. Uh, in Michigan, we have a sizable and growing, uh, Indian-American population who in one way or another does celebrate Diwali, uh, including the temple that is in my district, uh, along, I believe, Kennan and Sarasota. Um, and so just making sure that we acknowledge, uh, the many cultures that exist in our city and elsewhere and really highlighting the importance of what is a massively important day uh, for Hindus and, and Indian-Americans. So I thought this would be a great idea.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Goodman. Any discussion from, uh, the floor?
Well, it's important to respect each other's culture, to respect other cultures, uh, of people who live in, in, in our country and in our city, so. Very good.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I also like to add that it's, I love the diversity, uh, which Councilman Goodman brings this resolution and try to make sure we don't forget anybody in our community. Um, it's beautiful to understand just how diverse the city of Pontiac is. And when we see these resolutions, he definitely, uh, demonstrates that in the spirit of what's happening in this city. So I sincerely thank you for that resolution.
Thank you.
At this time, hearing nobody else wanting to speak when discussion, please roll call, uh, uh, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Uh, thank you, Clerk Doyle. At this time, the First Resolution, Department of Public Works, can I get a motion?
Some of.
To approve the bid and purchase of two pickup trucks? It's been moved by, uh, Councilman Goodman.
Uh, support.
Supported by Councilman Nichols. At this time, I would turn it over to the DPW Department and Mayor Grimal.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I, uh, want to begin, uh, before I turn it over to, uh, Mr. Cooley, although Mr. Cooley may get into this as well. Uh, we're hoping to, uh, have council amend this resolution to bump up the permissible, uh, purchase price slightly by, I believe, a combined $5,000, uh, for both trucks. I believe the resolution, uh, calls for a combined purchase price, the original resolution calls for a combined purchase price of $35,000 for both, uh, pickup trucks. And, uh, after reviewing some of the bids in auctions that have already occurred, Mr. Cooley would like to increase that combined purchase truck price to a total of $40,000 or $20,000 per pickup truck. But, Mr. Cooley, I'll allow you to get into more of the nuts and bolts here about, uh, the amendment that you're seeking to the initial resolution and, uh, any other information that you'd like to share.
Uh, good evening. Yes, uh, the mayor is correct. We, we were looking to, um, to bump that, uh, original request from $35,000 to $40,000. Um, that, that would put us at $20,000 per truck. Um, we, we were watching a few different auction sites and a, a few different trucks, and the, the bidding's gotten pretty aggressive on them. Uh, the couple that we're looking at are, uh, some low mileage trucks from another municipality that have plows on them already. Um, and it would be something good to get in our fleet right away. We've had, uh, several conversations with the, the dealers off of my deal and off of Oakland County's, uh, purchasing blanket that we can co-opt in with. And, uh, there's just no new trucks available. And, uh, they're very reluctant to give a timeline on if we order, how long we could get those vehicles in here. Um, we're making a pretty aggressive stance to get the, the labors and the labor tools hired. And with bringing those employees in, we need vehicles to put them in to get them around the city. And, uh, that's why we are actively looking to, to try to purchase a couple of very good shape used trucks to bring in.
Uh, thank you, sir. Any, Councilman Nicholson has the floor.
Um, I, I understand that with the purchase price, I, I did forward a resource over about fleet purchasing. Did, did you receive, have you made connection with that person?
Yeah, I, I've spoken with, with that person and with another, uh, fleet person as well. Um, and, and they are having the same issues that we're having, is struggling to get trucks.
Okay. This, so I, I recall talking about, uh, another, uh, vehicle auction that where we felt like we had already won a bid prior. Was that a previous?
Yeah, so, so the previous resolution we had was for large dump trucks that had the underbody plows, the salt spreaders, and those items. And we did win those trucks, um, and those are currently available. They're getting some, some small maintenance done to them, and then, then they'll be on the fleet with the rest of it. Uh, these are more of a pickup style truck that they could do the day-to-day operations in.
For the residents' benefit, do we know what the, the brand is of this truck?
Uh, these ones that we're currently looking at are, uh, either a Chevrolet or a GMC. There was two different brands.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the floor? Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. Really coolly, is there any possible, does anybody check out these, these trucks before?
Brother Cooley, is there any, does anybody check out these trucks before we bid on them?
Yes, we had our Highway Maintenance Superintendent and one of our foremen go out and take a look at these vehicles before we requested to bid on them.
Okay. And could you share what the year of these trucks are?
The ones we're currently looking at are 2010, but we are looking at a few different ones on this site. So, the two that are 2010s are currently low-mileage trucks, and we think they're the best-conditioned ones.
And when you say low mileage, what is?
I believe one's in the 50s and one's in the 70s.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Parker. Councilman, go ahead.
Yes, President Protem, how are we going to handle this since the memorandum is for $35,000? So, do we need to make a resolution to?
A new one.
Adjust?
Actually, we do need to make a resolution, but we do have a new memorandum.
Is this a new one?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, if there's any more discussion, I can make that motion. Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
So, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
There hasn't been a motion made from the previous resolution, so you would just make a motion to adopt this resolution?
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase and bid and purchase of two pickup trucks?
I make a motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman James, supported by Councilman Nicholson, to approve the resolution to approve the bid and purchase of two pickup trucks. Any discussion? It seems like we already made this motion. But...
Just to clarify, just so that you can just read the new now there, or be it resolved, just to keep the record.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will read the motion. Honorable City Council, we are asking to increase the bid among the pickup trucks. Director Cooley has been following the items, and believes that there may be a slight bidding war. What the estimate value of the trucks new is $40,000 apiece. We are asking to raise the bidding limit to $20,000 truck instead of the $17,500. This is one half of the estimated cost of the trucks new, and we consider this to be a good idea. New resolution should read, whereas the city of Pontiac DPW would bid to purchase two pickup trucks with a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000 per truck, and whereas it is necessary to have vehicles for normal DPD operations, now therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council authorize the DPW director to actively bid and purchase needed pickup trucks with a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000 per truck. At this time, can I get a roll call?
James?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the resolution releasing pass option to purchase 825 Golf Drive site recorded with the Oakland County?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman and seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that the city council approved the resolution releasing pass option to purchase 825 Golf Drive site recorded with Oakland County. Any discussion, I turn this over to the mayor's office.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is pretty straightforward, as a council is aware, and I think as most people who regularly attend these meetings are aware. The previous administration had entered into a lease agreement with the owner at 825 Golf Drive to lease on behalf of the city the premises there for a youth recreation center. That was done at a cost of about $28,000 per month. That lease was never approved by the previous city council, and in fact, the previous city council, I believe, had passed a resolution specifically disallowing the previous administration from entering into or continuing that lease arrangement. So, when I came into office in January, I exercised the city's right to early termination or to simply discontinue a continuing month-to-month lease arrangement, and of course, informed city council of that decision. The lease that the previous mayor purported to enter into included a option to purchase that property. That is an option that the city never exercised. Nonetheless, now that the owner of 825 Golf Drive is looking, I believe, to sell that property to another entity, to a buyer, there was a desire to have the city expressly state that we not only had not exercised that option, but had no desire to exercise that option. I don't know that this is strictly legally required, since we're no longer in that lease, and I would argue no longer even have the ability, if we wanted to, to exercise that right to purchase the 825 Golf Drive building. But nonetheless, the seller and buyer, and I believe their title company, would like us to make it plain and clear that we don't any longer have the right to purchase that property, and this is simply asking council to authorize me to sign a document that makes it very clear and plain as day that the city is releasing any option to purchase that property that it, at any point in the past, may have had. And that release of the option to purchase that property would be recorded at the Oakland County Register of Deeds.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. Any questions?
I did, I had one.
Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Brother Protem. In the process of releasing this, us from purchasing, will there be any funds that will be owed?
No, there would not.
Thank you. Is it possible, then, that we can put that in here? That we don't owe anyone? Or is that necessary? I don't know.
Well, I certainly wouldn't have any objection if the council would like to add that to the resolution itself, but it wouldn't be normal or necessary or really appropriate, I don't think, to put it in the release of the option itself. But I see that we have an attorney other than me in the room, who has her hand raised and would like to be recognized.
Hold up. Before, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, it's a quick question, and then, so, is there, do you find, I understand that this property is so closely connected to youth recreation and for that purpose, but if there is an option to buy, is there any, in your opinion or the administration's opinion, financially positive purpose that the city may want to acquire this property? I mean, especially with its current location next to, I know there's a build that's going on right there, is, would that make sense? Does it not make sense? Is there special pricing that's associated with that option to buy?
Well, that's actually a very interesting question. I'm not sure we truly have an option to buy any longer here, a legally enforceable option to buy. As I mentioned in my introductory comments, I, it's been a while since I've actually read the language, but I think that language or that option to buy, I believe, I'd have to look at it again, but I believe that option to buy really only remained viable so long as we remained in that lease. You know, obviously, the fact that they want us to sign a release might suggest otherwise, or at least that they think there's some possibility that somebody could construe it as otherwise. But I would be inclined to say that as soon as we ended our lease, that we essentially gave up any option to purchase that property. I would be inclined to say that there's really no purpose for the city to buy that property or to own that property on an ongoing basis, unless, of course, the city council wanted to entertain it as a site for recreation, including youth recreation. But other than that, I don't think the city should generally be in the business of buying up parcels unless we have a specific intended use for those parcels. You know, we are in need, as we've discussed, of property for a DPW location, but there's nothing about this property that's particularly well-suited to that. And the prospect of maintaining the school building or going to the expense of tearing down that school building is not very appealing. Now, I suppose, in theory, you could say we should exercise our option to buy at a certain price and then sell it at a higher price, in theory, but I have no idea what that property is appraised for currently, so it would not be my recommendation to exercise the purchase option for any particular purpose. And so, again, we're bringing this...
Certainly not interested in that, but I just wanted to know, especially based on its proximity to a current build that I know is potentially looking to expand, and I don't think we're in the position right now to manage that property or even purchase it at today's market rate. But if there were some sort of special previous market rate language or something like that, it was just interesting to...
Yeah, it's not my recommendation that we exercise the option to purchase, even if we had one, and as I mentioned, I don't think we still have a viable legally enforceable right to buy it.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal and Councilman. Nicholson, you have any other questions?
I'll say, thank you.
Attorney Monique Sharp, you have the floor.
Clarify really quickly. So, the lease had two options to purchase. The second option, I think, ended, that option had to be exercised in 2020. The city did not exercise that option, so the mayor is correct. By pure operation of law, the issue, the option to purchase became moot after that day. I have actually had conversation with Dr. Byerly and his, the real estate person, because I couldn't understand why we even had to do this. The reason why the city is being asked to do this is because there was an actual recording of the option to purchase with the Register of Deeds that I was unaware of, and I believe probably the city was unaware of initially. So, to keep things clean with the recording, that is why they asked for this subsequent recording. Otherwise, there would be no necessity for it, because, again, the city has no option to purchase. That died in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Sharp, for the historical foundation of why we're looking at this resolution tonight. We have anybody, any other councilmen that want to, council people that want to speak on this issue? Hearing now, I'd like to read the resolution. The city of Pontiac would like to release the option to purchase real estate from the Creative Schools Management LLC located at 825 Golf Drive, Pontiac, Michigan. The city of Pontiac is no longer interested in forming this option. Whereas a memorandum of option to purchase real estate, the memorandum was recorded at LePur 52123, page 755 of the Oakland County records, whereas the city of Pontiac chose not to exercise the purchase option, whereas the city of Pontiac hereby wishes to release the purchase option, acknowledges that the memorandum was null and void. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Pontiac authorize the signature of the release of option to purchase real estate. At this time, Clerk Dorr, could you do the roll call, please?
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Thank you, Clerk Dorr. At this time, we have public comment, this time that's been allocated during a mission, during a meeting for citizens to come forward and discuss some issues of the city. We have three minutes per person.
First person is Ms. Joanne Green.
Hello, I am Joanne Green from District 2. I want to talk about who is the worst slumlord in our city. It's our city, government. That is the worst slumlord. As long as I sent an email to the mayor, I'm waiting for a response, but asked some questions, but at the end I said, "As long as we neglect our neighborhoods and continue to let condemned, rotting buildings stand, slumlords profit from the city allowing hazardous living conditions, crime will get worse than it is. An effort to bring people to Pontiac is in vain if the city fails to put neighborhood light first. We can have a rec center with no transportation for the kids, but if these kids have to live in neglected neighborhoods, the chances of them becoming a victim or a perpetrator of crime is high. Parks and concerts are great, but we need to put the money into lighting, demolishing these buildings, houses, enforcing codes, holding Pontiac City Departments accountable. Please, we will never thrive if these issues aren't corrected." And I do believe we can. If anyone, and I beg the council members to take a look at our computer system, reporting system, it doesn't work. Building and Safety wasn't even using it. They wouldn't use it. But yet, Mike, what's his name, the head of Buildings and Safety, he wouldn't even use the computer system. So, the days of posted notes are over. We have to record this, and that system has to be revamped. Those people need to be held accountable. The mayor said about cross-training these people in electrical and plumbing. I'm sorry, you need licensed people to do that, certified people, not code enforcement. Okay? And the other thing, I object to people shouting out, being allowed to shout out after our pledge allegiance. I find it offensive. I find it, if you have a comment to make about it, you do it a public comment, but you do not do it and disrespect others because you just feel like you can. But please, council people, take a good look at your neighborhoods. We can fix this. We can do it. We just have to step in there. And also, Brett Nicholson had a great, my councilperson, great thing, put these fines on their property taxes. We will eventually get that money. Right now, we are not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And one of the best segues possible, Mr. Quincy Stewart.
My First Amendment right, it's my First Amendment right, I exercise it. To the mayor, city council citizens, both here and by media, the initial inhumane treatment by the Oakland County Sheriff and continued injustices suffered by Ms. Wilson and the ancillary trauma her family endures cannot and will not be swept under the proverbial rug. Ms. Wilson continues to languish as a documented mentally ill person in an environment not conducive to treatment. Her family needs to know when a mental eval will take place and conducted by whom. Her family needs to know why the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, who touts there will be fair and more equitable treatment of citizens, particularly Black and Brown citizens, who are historically and routinely unjustly treated by police and the justice system, has not received a fair investigation beyond internal investigations by police into misconduct by police. Not only the family, but we as citizens need to know why undersheriff Curtis Childs appeared only a few days after the incident on TV news touting the brutality heaped on Ms. Wilson was justified, and no charges nor impending disciplinary action would be forthcoming. Lastly, the family would like the city council and mayor to not let this incident, the lack of body cameras, slipshod, and shady internal investigations, lethargic movement with regard to treatment versus incarceration fade into the ether as so many incidents like this do. As I conclude, picture with me, if you will, for a brief moment, a well-to-do white woman from Gross Point, Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, pulling her designer pants down, setting a rag on fire or attempting to, cursing at officers while walking away. She has on two diamond necklaces, $400 shoes, a tanned facelift, and status is wealthy and prestigious but mentally ill nonetheless. Tell me in all honesty, would police jump her quickly and savagely punch her? This happened to a not-so-well-to-do mentally ill Black woman in a city, by the way, whose median income is only $22,000. Police felt at ease beating her because historically, it's always been easy. The family wants justice, and we will not let this pass. Be assured of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bill Maxey, sorry if the microphone was not on. Yes, I did.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, community at large and governance. Update on Mrs. Wilson. But first of all, let me tell you the documented action, in-person action, of five of us from the community. Mr. Stewart, Blair, Robert Bass, H. Bill Maxey, and... Mr. Stewart, Blair, Robert Bass, H. Bill Maxey, and backup finance and administration by Chuck Johnson and Robert Bass. I personally, the team agreed, and I did contact the top prosecutor face-to-face. Also talked to David Williams about this incident of Mrs. Wilson incarcerated. Following that, I received two calls from the mayor concerned about what's going on with Mrs. Wilson. Investigation thus far, please take note, locked up 25 days incommunicado because the sheriff would not teach her how to use a cell phone. Secondly, $5,700 bond. Why? No threat to herself or people in the community. This woman was out three years in the community with medication, took care of her basic fundamentals until it was interfered with by finance. What makes it so lopsided, I won't say lopsided, but let me say one thing, those of you see us, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, you see the same five of us every week. You know who we are, we are concerned about civil rights, communication, and trailblazing, and getting information out. Now, of all of the activities, my question is, councilpersons, you know who we are? We had not heard from District One through Seven, not either suggested someone's mother, someone's aunt, and grandmother? When are you going to show some type of connections other than speaking? Mrs. Wilson is in jail. We are waiting for a report from David Williams. As I said, the mayor and I have talked, because I'm one of the forefronts, but if you haven't identified who we are by now, council, and you know you can come to us about anything in the city, because we are what you call triplet, we have triplet information across the board, but as of now, I'm just looking at you, I'm really looking at you, especially my councilperson, District One, if you have any question. Robert Bass, you have his number? He's chairperson of CDC. If not, you call Bill Maxey, 248-762-493. And I forgot about, Mr. Darryl Fokes has a lot of follow-up. So, just look at us and think we're here just to be talking, and keep your omission going, because whatever happens to her, if it's good, I don't want to see you up there saying, "Yeah, yeah." If it's bad, you're not going to show your face. And that's how I feel about it, after in this community, trailblazing, communicating, collaborating with the same five peoples, Jones, Bass, Wilson, Maxey, and occasionally Kermit Williams. Thank you very much. For this time, that's exactly how I feel.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Blair McGowan.
District One, 34 State Street. Ms. Wilson, I feel that I'm with her as I am with Quincy Stewart and Bill and the other members of the committee. She's been in jail for 45 days. She's had no communication with her children. The court-appointed lawyer she won't talk to. The civil attorney that was sent to her, she wouldn't talk to him because she's mentally ill. She doesn't belong in jail. This calls into question the role of the sheriff and his leadership, calls into question the training of his staff, it calls into question the leadership of the prosecutor. Frederick Douglass, in words far more eloquent than I can quote, talked about, "You can know a community by what it will tolerate." And in my discussions in and around Pontiac, everybody has seen this video, and they almost shrugged their shoulders because it's so routine. And the thing that distinguishes this incident from other incidents is that there was a video that showed just how horrific it was. There was an intervention specialist who's not a sheriff, but she was there on the scene, and two sheriffs went by, they bypassed her, and they interrogated her outside of the rules of how you deal with mentally ill people. And they tackled her and beat her savagely. George Floyd did not have as much energy on him, and he died. We're fortunate that Mrs. Wilson did not die. This calls for, there's implications in this for the charter commission when they review our relationship with the sheriff. There's implications for the citizens who, to a great extent, haven't raised their voices because this senior citizen is in jail, and she's mentally ill. We have to do something. And it's not about yelling at the city council, it's about taking constructive action in our own lives, in our own neighborhoods, in our own community, and in our city, and in our county. We forget that the sheriff is our employee, and the people in those cars are our staff. We pay for them. Is this what we want them to do? We control them, and we should demand them to treat us the way we want to be treated. There was a report on the 23rd of August by the captain, and he said it was a preliminary report. I'd like to see the final report. And we at the Crowfoot, we're going to do a fundraiser. We do a lot of prestigious events, including the state of the city, the governor's coming two times in the next month, and we're going to do a fundraiser for Desiree Wilson, because we feel we have to get her a lawyer for legal and any other lawyers that the family wants to hire. And we hope that we'll announce the date and the agenda of that fundraiser. We hope the citizens of Pontiac will come out and enthusiastically support the senior citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Michael Koblick.
Mr. President, city council, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think I'd like to just take a second to let the previous comments sort of digest because they're important, and mine's about fun stuff, truthfully. Anyway, my name is Michael Koblick, and I'm from All Saints Episcopal Church. And this Sunday, we are hosting what we call a, what we are calling a Pontiac Sunday, which is a thank you to many of the organizations that partner with us and the different ministries that we do. And actually, my comment will amend item number 20 on the communication. We've invited many of the leaders from the different organizations to a breakfast, because Episcopalians can do a pancake breakfast pretty well, we're notorious for that. From 7:00 to 9:00 on that Sunday morning, we've invited police, fire, members of, employees from the hospitals, hopefully catching them at shift change, so before they go to shift, they can get a breakfast, or as they come off of shift, they can get a pancake breakfast with us. After that, from 9:00 to 10:30, we are going to be having an open house. We consider All Saints one of the jewels of Pontiac. If Mr. McGinnis were here, he's one of our de facto experts in some of the art within the church, so we're going to take the opportunity that time to, if you're available, all of the City of Pontiac's invited to this for sure, to come walk through. We'll have docents kind of giving a history of the church. I think we're the second oldest church in the City of Pontiac behind First Pres, if I'm not mistaken. Also discussing some of the different outreach ministries that we do with, well, community breakfast. We're exploring an outreach ministry for life beyond reentry for returning citizens coming back from incarceration. We have a youth program called Bound Together that does a mentoring program through the week, expanding that. I understand there's now a group of students that are wrestlers, of which a big percentage of them end up going on to states, which is kind of cool. They do their practicing there. And then finally, the morning will end with a 10:30 church service, we are a church after all, focused on Indigenous Peoples' Day. To city council and to the mayor in particular, I'd like to invite you to come serve with us and meet your constituents if you're able for the breakfast. Not only get breakfast, I'm going to feed you for sure, but also help us serve the community. Being elected is much like being called, and I invite you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Billy Swazer.
First, I'd like to thank DPW and the City of Pontiac. I had complained about potholes on Baldwin, because that is a street I take almost every day. I go north on Baldwin from Walton, and I hit the potholes, and when I come back to go to my home on Marshbanks, I hit the potholes again. But the potholes going north are not as bad as the potholes coming south. I want to thank Trevor in DPW. He called me, he took my complaint here at City Hall, then I think he called me later that day or the next day, and they hit, I went up Northbound on Baldwin, and I seen them repairing it. I was a little disappointed that they used cold patch, when it seems like it's still hot patch season, but they repaired the holes. The other thing I would like to ask you, city council, is if the city clerk can advise us on proposal two, which is on the ballot, this month I will be sending out to my neighbors my thoughts on the ballot and what they should vote for, but hey, they vote whatever they want, just want everybody to vote. But two, it's kind of unclear to me, because I think that there is a current proposal, and I cannot see exactly how the proposed ballot proposal, proposition changes that in a positive way. So, if it's possible, you can have him do a special presentation, five to 10 minutes. I think he should be able to clear all the items, the issues up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jean Matthews.
Jean Matthews, resident and president of Harrington Hills. Good evening, President Pro Tim Carrington, to our council, Councilman William Parker of the Fifth District, District Five, council members, Mayor Grimaldi, and of course, Deputy Mayor in residence. One concern, I think, had been thinking about and had gotten some information or some questions from the residents in regards with, I'm just asking the council for some guidance or some information, with all the disasters we have in all across the country, what is the specific plan? Is there a specific plan in Pontiac for a disaster or in some type of emergency? And maybe I have missed the meeting, or there's been some information sent out, but when we do our newsletter, newsletter, these are things that, you know, I would love to give to my neighbors in my area. So, if y'all could get that information, where we can go and get it, if we had a true disaster in the City of Pontiac, where would the residents go? What plan is in place? I certainly will appreciate it. All righty, down to our special announcement for Harrington Hills. First, Mayor Grimaldi, we want to thank you for your message of hope on last Thursday during the state of the city address. Your message certainly included an informational update on the progress, what this administration, along with the council, has made, well-attended, well-received, and we'd certainly appreciate it. Our special announcement, it has been about three years since the Harrington Hills residents have been able to meet because of the COVID pandemic. It was held in three years in 2019. This meeting, along with our awards ceremony, will consist of our special recognition for eligible residents, not only for the beautification, the signs, but maintenance of the properties. And also, we want to recognize, we have a lot of longtime residents who are not able to get out to the meetings, but yet and still, they are participating. We are going to be giving out awards for our community cleanup and community service. We have those neighbors who will look after each other, and so we want to recognize them. So, there are a lot of good things going on in the city when it comes to maintaining our city, and certainly we want to take time to recognize these residents. So, that's going to be Thursday, October the 6th, at Harrington Elementary School in the gym, where Ms. Cindy Lang is the principal. Certainly, if you'd like to stop by, we will have refreshment, and we'd like to invite you. Thank you very much. Oh, I forgot, one important thing, our honorable Tim Grimaldi will be the guest speaker. Okay? Thank you, mayor. Thank you.
Dr. Deidre Waterman.
I wanted to give more information about youth recreation, but since I was sitting here and heard some of the public comment, I would like to give some answers to the people who asked. Ms. Matthews, I have the answer to your question. We want to talk after this meeting. But also, you had talked about the option for the lease on the youth rec, yeah, that's long since been revoked. Yeah, it's now no longer an option for us. When the council signed the lease, and they knew the amount of the lease, and they chose that site over Wisner, okay, because Wisner didn't have a tennis, a basketball court. So, they chose the Golf Drive site, which had a wonderful basketball court. And at that time, the lease could, you had option to purchase after two years, they didn't do it then, but there was another option to purchase after one year. After one year, there was no longer any obligation for us to purchase at the price. So, the council, when they decided not to buy it, there was $3.2 million that they set aside that should still be in your budget, that's there for that purpose, it's in restricted budget. So, I hope it's there as we move forward and get the youth center that we would like so much for the children to have. I want to move forward in terms of telling you some more about the thoughts, in terms of what the possibilities and the feasibility is to share that information with you for the youth center. But unfortunately, as we bring up some of the past, one of the things that, we kept the center open during the time of our administration because the city attorney told the council over and over again, "There's nothing illegal about keeping it open. You passed this, there was a holdover, and you could do it." And besides the thought that I had an obligation to the people, they passed the Milich, and one of the things I promised them was that we would get a youth center open. So, we did that, and they enjoyed it, and it was, accomplished all the things we wanted for a youth center to accomplish. And I had no idea why they would want to close the only youth center that the children had without any plan. And you see, we're still trying to get together the plan. So, that's really the history of that, and I wanted to share that with you and with the other citizens who are watching. But in addition to that, I had mentioned the fact that I didn't know whether the old Hayes Dean Center, Hayes Jones Center, was still available. Couple of years ago, it was up for sale at a really reasonable price. It's a lovely facility. The owner of that has revamped that, done a wonderful job with the clubhouse, he has all those manicured fields, acres there, which are tennis courts, plus it's next to Rotary Park, all the things that we would like a youth center to take, and it's right in the middle of town, if that's what you're considering. So, I don't know if that's still available, still open. I took the seniors there, because I thought maybe the seniors might want to consider it for their senior center. I took them there, we had a wonderful white party, they loved it, but they decided they'd rather stay at Bowens and Ruth Peterson. So, I just want to share that with you.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark.
I'm speaking as a resident of Pontiac, longtime resident. First, let me say this, to know better is to do better. Am I right? I hope we all in agreements of that. When council members sit here and they feel that they've been offended by a lot of the actions that the homeowners have said that they want and need. actions that the homeowners have said that they want and need, and the stress come out of their voice is sincere. The reason the stress is there because they have put out numerous of time, especially when the residents are talking to each other, that there's no form of communication when they're trying to call into their district to speak to someone or to get return calls. That's where the frustration come in at. So when they have to come down here to get heard, it comes out as being attacked, when it really is not an attack. It's a form of stress, and stress is mounting of emotions that's been longstanding. Pontiac for eight years, as you would say, from the past administration, has not done well. And thus far, in this administration, it does not appear that the residents are getting anything that they really been looking for, to some peace of mind after paying their taxes. So please, District One is not here, and District Seven is not here. So in my opinion, it's really not fair to talk to disapportion, but I am going to say this. Ms. Green made a very good statement. In order for our kids, for the city and our grandkids and our neighbors to get well educated, they need an environment, not just food and sleep. They need to know they can come home to a safe haven, to a haven that can embrace them all up and down the streets in which they reside in. I was very fortunate when I was raised in Pontiac to have the neighbors to help my mother, and we helped each other and fed when they wasn't home. We called the neighbors new when we came in. We had that luxury, but these kids today don't have that luxury. The luxury they have is fear that a gunshot is going to be shot through their windows. And no kid like to know that the home that they reside in is not safe, or they got to fight the battles at school or the conditions that they live in. You, as council people, are to make sure that at least these kids can have it. You get $38,000 this year per district to put back into your district. Having parties is fine. I applaud Mr. Carrington because he put a sign in his district that stands tall. Now, if other districts can do that, you have Mr. Goodman's district, which is a lot of kids, a lot of renters there, and right now, they're worried about who they're going, what body they're going to find on the streets tomorrow. Please understand, put that $38,000 to good use, please.
Thank you.
So a point of information for the residents, the city budget did not give every district $38,000. It specifically allowed the amount from the previous year, which was not spent, to roll over to this year, and then to be added on top of what was budgeted for this year. So not every district has the same amount.
Order.
So...
Hey, excuse me, excuse me. Order, order. We can answer that at public comment, Councilman.
Just wanted to let that be out there.
Yep.
Is Ms. Gloria Miller?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to do some business first before I say what I got to say because it's not going to be nice tonight. I'm going to, anyone know me, and all the residents out in the City of Pontiac that know me, who I am, one thing I do, I carry myself well, I do not get into fights, I don't do bars because I don't want to. That's not what I do. I want to live a life with my children, my grandkids, and I want a better city for myself because my grandkids don't live in City of Pontiac. So I still fight for the other kids that live here. And with that being said, Mayor and Parker, Councilman Parker, there's a business that I even called today and went by, and I was told that you know about it, and the mayor, and we're going to see what you guys do with this. They got nice homes up in there. And I'm not going to mention the street because I don't want to do that on public, not yet, but you should know what I'm speaking. And I'm going to send an email to all of you guys tomorrow and show you what it is. There's a business being run, it's a commercial business, and you call the number on the window, and he'll tell you, he's selling a home for X amount of dollars, and then he'll tell you that he has a diesel service there. It's a running, what do you call it? Trailer, dumpster, large commercial truck, Delta Technologies that he got there in his window, in the middle of the neighborhood. Now, he says that he, the neighbors, I talked to some of the neighbors, still on council job, but not on council. This is what I do. They said that, Councilman Parker, you know about it. I don't know. And, because they said they called you, and you never have called them back over there.
No, they haven't.
And, no, you can't talk. And also, they said, Mike Wilson, Mayor, knows about it for sure because they seen him over there. Now, their thing is that maybe he getting a little kickback because they sending him back home every time they calling about, and they are sick and tired of it. And it's getting bad, and they wanted me to handle it first. I said, I'll talk to you guys and see what's happened, then we go from there. There's some more. There's one on Colorado Street that one person, resident over there, got a Costco trailer in their yard. Got to call on that, want me to check that out. You may want to check that out. All that, just keep in mind, I'm going to send it to you with email. I want to announce it publicly because I'm sure they're watching me when I'm speaking on. And before I get done, I want to say something. When I come to this meeting, I want City of Pontiac to hear this and hear it dearly. Gloria Miller stands by herself. No one can scare me, no one, because I speak on truth. That's all I speak on. I don't bow down to anybody but my residents, always have. I fight for the ones that ask me to fight for them when I come to this podium. And good luck on trying to fight anything on me, you'll be bored to death if you follow me. Just came from a basketball game with my granddaughter. All I want is a better city, and I want to hold the council and the mayor accountable. That don't mean I don't like them. That's holding them accountable because the last time I told you the last mayor was here, she looked like she made, something sent to the AG and maybe going to jail. I'm warning you this time, I see things, pay attention.
Thank you.
Went in the hallway. So, Mr. Kermit Williams, if you would like to come do your public comment.
You can skip over and come back.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I gave you a lot of point of privileges, some to my dismay, but it was always good. Again, thank you, Mayor and council. I wanted to come down today because absentee ballots are out hitting homes, and what happened to our northern border was atrocious. I know Councilman Goodman, along with Mayor Grimal and the rest of the council, has made a strong stand in support of public transit going through Oakland County. But for those of you who don't know, Auburn Hills took the privilege to send out a resolution from the council and the city manager to the residents of Auburn Hills, telling them not to vote for the transit millage. As we know by the law, you can't campaign during, in a public body for or against anything that goes in the election cycle. But I wanted to commend this council and this mayor for supporting public transportation throughout Oakland County. As people go out and vote, know that neighbors like Auburn Hills do not want people who look like me going to Great Lakes Crossing on public transit. Instead, they have decided to opt out, and so just as a point of emphasis, the actual millage language that is on the ballot for Oakland County Transportation that's on everybody's ballot would actually decrease the amount of money that Pontiac residents are currently paying because we are already an opt-in community. And it would expand smart bus services for our senior citizens and others. I'm not allowed to tell you to vote yes on it, so I won't. What I will say is that our neighbors and other communities who have opted out are telling people to vote no, and they're using their public forums and their public bodies of mayors and council to tell other people to vote no on something they should not talk about on the dais or in a public body. So again, I want to thank this council and mayor for having the integrity not to campaign from the dais on behalf of public transportation for the cities of Pontiac and Oakland County. But I would also ask this council and this mayor to publicly condemn the actions of our neighbors to the north, with the exception of council people like Jeffrey Hawkins, who is a dear friend of Pontiac, who voted no on signing that resolution. So I just want to commend this council for standing up and letting people know that transit is important. I also would like this council and this mayor to take public action because the people need to know that this is not only cheaper for Pontiac residents, but it will also allow the expansion of smart bus services throughout Oakland County, and Auburn Hills is not doing it the correct way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And I will also not tell Councilman Eugene Hawkins that you got his name wrong, as I say in a public meeting. Next person is Mr. James Abish.
Mayor, council, City of Pontiac citizens, I think by now we all are aware because Time Magazine has made Elizabeth II, the Queen of England, has passed away. Billy Graham, prior to his passing, informed the public, when you hear I died, don't not believe it. I've just changed my address. I'm suggesting that Queen Elizabeth of England, when you know her history, you should have a strong appreciation of who and what she was. She has not passed, she has just changed her dress. Ingenious people of America, Christopher Columbus, our forefathers knew more about what was going on in America than we have any idea. The record has been established by our forefathers. Christopher Columbus set in motion establishment of the 13 colonies that became the 13 states. At present, I believe the plague of America has not 48, but 50 stars. We didn't buy these stars, they came willingly. Ingenious people, I don't think anybody in this audience can know, our historians know more about what was going on in our history than any of us. The landmass across Alaska, the peoples in South America, historians are still sorting out what went on in our early American prior to Christopher Columbus. There's a lot of history there that we don't have the answers. I'm going to close with proverb. Wisdom is a prime thing. Acquire wisdom, and with all that thou acquire, acquire understanding. Be patient with the facts. Opinions do not make a fact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. I want to first start by congratulating Mayor Grimal on your State of the City. It was very promising, your comments was right on, it was well put together, and we're going to be looking forward to some of the things that you talked about at that meeting. Second of all, I want to call the mayor's attention, I don't want to step on your building and safety, DPW Director, but let me say this to you, council and Mr. Mayor, don't buy these used trucks. They're not worth the money you're going to spend. $20,000 may not sound like a lot for these trucks you're getting ready to buy, but those trucks have already seen three winters. You know what three winters is like in Michigan? If these trucks have anywhere between 50,000 and 70,000 miles on them, they need brakes, brake pads, they're going to need shocks, they're going to need tires, who knows what else is in there, Mr. Mayor. Now, again, this is what, I want to make sure that your DPW Director understands where I'm coming from, but I've never been one to buy a used truck in my operation, my pickup trucks, rather. I bought big used ones that I used. But pickup trucks, they're designed the last three years, and that's it, before you have to start putting a lot of money into them. They're strong trucks, they'll do the job, but when we start buying used equipment, it's going to fail. Neither one of you up there is going to know when that truck has got to go in the shop for repair. It's going to go in there and get repaired, the mayor's going to sign the check and pay it. It's as simple as that. But don't buy used equipment. I want to go a step further here. My wife just texted me after she heard Quincy Stewart at the mic here and Maxie. If $5,000 will get this woman out of jail this evening, my wife Pam wants to post that $5,000 today, right now. If a responsible family member contact me after this meeting, right here at City Hall or outside, or call me, 248-640-4579, we will get that woman out of jail if the sheriff will let her out. And $5,000 ain't no money, because if you spend 45 minutes in that rat hole, let me tell you something, folks, you will not like it. You will not like it. Those dirty beds, those dirty bunks, those dirty floors, feces all over everywhere, and you laying there with your head next to the toilet, and somebody goes there and puke or leaves themselves, let me tell you, folks, if anybody would come to your rescue, you certainly appreciate it. Don't go to jail. Thank you. And I'll be available right now, this evening, to help get this woman out of jail. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Pastor Kathy Desera. So I did say your first and last name right, I hope.
Well, I started out with two things tonight, but I now have five. First of all, condolences to the family of the young man that was killed up on High Street last night. I know that they're going through a really hard time, and the city needs to rally around behind them. I know he's a local boy. Number two, for the DPW, the Giddings and Walton Hole is opened up again, just east of Giddings on Walton, it's a pretty good sized hole, and there's another one forming. So if they could get to that, we'd really appreciate it. Number three, last week on the agenda and the comments or the last couple pages, you talked about October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which it is, and it's not on here again this week, by the way, and it should be. And you invited the ladies in the community. Breast cancer is not a ladies' disease. I ran an awareness group for two and a half years. I am a breast cancer survivor, and I can tell you that men get breast cancer, and it's a lot tougher for them than it is for the women. You must remember to include men when you're talking breast cancer awareness. It's very important, and it's not known widely, but it's a very compromising disease, and it's one of those diseases that doesn't care who it picks. Number four, for the sheriff. When we go to seminary as ministers, we take a lot of training in mental health awareness. I had three semesters totally devoted to mental health. You start with grief and the mental health that arrives from that, and then they have you another type of mental health, and then another type, and you do that for a year and a half. But our sheriffs get a week, and they think that's enough. But our sheriffs get a week, and they think that's enough. These guys were not, guys and girls, were not properly trained in how to handle a patient who is having one of her, one of the breaks. And when they have these breaks, and nobody knows what the trigger is, the trigger that triggered her last time may not be the trigger that triggered her this time. In between, they have periods when they're perfectly fine, but if you are not properly trained, and a week won't do it. So that is the aware, the oneness that I think Sheriff Bouchard has with his men. They need training. They didn't know what to do, so they became cops and not people who were caring for a woman who was ill mentally. And I don't care how good you are as a cop, if you don't know how to handle mental health, please don't try, because this is a terrible, horrible situation, and God bless Chuck's wife. Why hasn't anyone else stepped up in all these weeks? And number five, had an incident that was brought to my attention this week. The last couple of weeks have been a little rough toward the end of things here in this room, and a 10-year-old child's parent said to me, you know sometimes children are watching city council with us because we're sitting and watching? And my 10-year-old, not mine, this person's 10-year-old, said to them, why do they, why do they not like each other? Do they hate? Has somebody hurt somebody? This is a 10-year-old. And we wonder why our kids shoot each other. Look at the example we're setting.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Oh, no, sir, hold up. No, sir. No, sir. Counsel, would you like to give Mr. Johnson a point of privilege?
I, I have no objection.
Go ahead, sir.
I was just informed that this lady that we're referencing here is not in jail. Now, I'm, I'm waiting to hear from a responsible person that's gonna tell me if that's a fact. Is this, does anybody in here know if that's factual, that she's in jail or out of jail?
Oh, we can-
Whichever way, I just wanted to make that clear.
We can definitely find out for you, sir. Thank you. That concludes our public comment. At this time, we have city council communications. I will not read every one of these communications. You can go through our website, you can see over 25 communication items, but I'm gonna actually read a few of them.
Great Spirit Week.
Thankful Hearts Annual Collection Drive for Coats and Toys underway. You can contact Ruth Matig at 248-563-3191 for more information, including how to donate new or gently used coats and jackets, or if you know of the children in need of coats. Also, CVS Promacy and St. Paul Pontiac Community Lutheran Church Annual Flu Vaccine Clinic, October the 5th, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, held at St. Paul Pontiac, 1133 Jocelyn Avenue, Pontiac, Michigan. The Greater Pontiac Community Coalition Business Housing Economic Symposium, economic update by Comerica Bank Chief Economist, William Adams, October the 5th, from 8:00 to 11:00 AM, held at Cedar Point Marriott, 3600 Cedar Point Parkway, Pontiac. Pontiac Transportation Museum free tours as part of Spirit Week, October the 5th, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, located at 250 West Pike Street. Pontiac High School Boys varsity football team homecoming game versus Troy Athens High School. So the Chiefs, Huskies, and the Phoenix, please show up. That's gonna be a great game, as we support our high school Phoenix football team.
I have the information.
Pontiac Knight Riders Motorcycle Club is offering a free annual senior citizens dinner, October the 8th, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, held at 339 Rayburn. And the final, Carehouse Oakland County Seize the Hope Tour, October 11th, from 12, from noon to 1:00 PM, located at 44765 Wilred Avenue in Pontiac. So that was only a short synopsis of the over 35 communications we have, so you can please go through our website. Councilman Nicholson.
I did just look up, Ms. Desrae Wilson is listed as an inmate currently in the Clemess system, does show that she's currently in the Oakland County Jail in the annex. It does show a total, the bonds are listed as eligible for 10% cash payment, one of 50,000, one of 1,200, one of 1,200, one of 1,200, the rest have no bond. That would bring it to $5,360 cash. Of course, there would be other surety that would need to be put up for that, but then otherwise, it wouldn't also include any electronic, yeah, if there's any other electronic, you know, tethering or something like that, that they may require, but 5,360 is what the Clemess system shows as her total cash bond.
Uh, thank you.
And then just to highlight, two more events that are happening, there is a youth political panel that is happening for, for the community from Oakland Ford, that's happening, I believe, October 14th, and I'll look at, I'll get the final thing for that later, October 14th in the evening at Divine 26, so that will be happening, I believe, it starts at 6 o'clock. And then additionally from that, on October 13th, so not this Thursday, but the following Thursday, there will be a transit on tap, being held at Liberty Bar from 6:00 to 8:00, and that is an event to promote public transit and give information to residents and citizens and those alike, and it'll have multiple elected officials, including those from City Hall, as well as the county commission, who will be there to talk more about that village. So, just wanted to add that in there.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Just one final communications, I've been, I forget, is the 2022 Election Educational Summit hosted by Ms. Gloria Span and Commissioner Angela Powell, Ruth Peterson Senior Center, Monday, October 10th. So if you want to have any questions, please contact Ms. Gloria Span at 248-977-0942 for more information. And please, as a community, if you wanna hear who's on the ballot, you wanna hear what proposals, are we dealing with, like, Mr. Kermit Williams stated earlier, that we can't, we're not allowed in this public forum to actually tell you to vote yes or no. So, but we can give you, we can produce information where you can go out and find out exactly where you wanna vote at, so, in which way. So please, share this information, Monday, October 10th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at the Ruth Peterson Senior Center, is an election education forum. Thank you. At this time, Mayor's Office Communication.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two communications. The first, as I've mentioned in past weeks, is that we can, we continue to allow for registration into our fall youth recreation and enrichment programming, so if you have a young person in your household, one of your children, or a grandchild, or a niece, or a nephew, or if your neighbors have kids, or you have friends who have kids here in the city, please encourage them, or sign them up yourself, to sign up for our youth recreation and enrichment program. And we have a really wide range of opportunities for young people in the city this fall. Yes, we have sports and athletics offerings, but we've got art, and music, and a chess club, an entrepreneurship class program, etiquette classes, you name it, not literally, but we almost have anything that would interest any young person in our community. We even have baking classes, so no matter what your young person's interest, we have something that should fit into their realm of interest. So encourage you to sign up. As I've mentioned in past weeks, the way to do so is online at pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com, And then the second announcement is that this coming Saturday, we have the final in our four-part series of brunch and community conversations with the mayor. This is an opportunity to come out and hear a brief update about the city, but more importantly, to ask any and all questions that you might have for me. So please, come on out, it's a very informal, fun event, and again, it's very free-flowing. Whatever's on your mind, come on out, express your concerns, ask your questions, and maybe even most importantly, from your perspective, get free food. We have a really robust brunch on offer, you will not leave hungry. That is again, this Saturday, October 8th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Bowen Center. And that's all I've got, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Grimaldi. At this, you can segue into your closing comments.
Well, first, I wanna thank Ms. Sharp for providing clarity around this release of the option to purchase. I was not aware that a option to purchase had previously been recorded with registered deeds, and that certainly explains why the seller and potential purchaser of the property wanted us to record the release. So thank you for shedding that light on the topic. Secondly, I know that a member of the public mentioned a couple of addresses, addresses where businesses are improperly operating. I am not aware of either of those addresses, so obviously, to address those concerns, I need to know those addresses, so if the member of the public can please stay after and share those with me, that would be great, and we'll get right on addressing those. I also wanted to address some misinformation that was shared tonight. Another member of the public suggested that we were cross-training building inspectors with other duties. That is not the case. I can understand, though, the confusion, because we have three, we had, I should say, three different categories of work being done that are all somewhat similar or related. We had building inspectors, which, as the member of the public mentioned, really do largely technical inspections, that is to say, inspecting electrical work, or mechanical work, or other things that really do require an in-depth amount of expertise into technical matters. Those folks, known as building inspectors, will continue to be their own entity of building inspectors, and will continue to be focused on building inspection within their area of expertise. However, in the past, we had two other areas of inspection work done. We had code enforcement officers, which in the past were responsible for essentially outdoor blight, cars on the grass, grass that wasn't getting mowed, building facades that were in disrepair. And then separately, in the past, there were rental unit inspectors, who went into rental units and inspected the condition of the rental units. We, what we've done is we've combined the duties of rental unit inspections, which are not technical in nature, like building inspectors, with the duties of code enforcement officers, and we now have 10 total positions in that area, and we are cross-training those who fill those positions to do both what was known as code enforcement work, and what was known as rental unit inspection work. So we have 10 positions that will now do both of those categories of work. So I wanna be clear that building inspectors, which do require technical expertise, will continue to focus solely on building inspector work. The other area, same member of the public, seemed to suggest that building inspectors, or the, what was the building department, now the building division, was not using any computer system to register the findings that they come across. I can't speak to what happened in the past, but I, but I can definitively say that building inspectors, like code enforcement officers and rental unit inspectors, now a combined position, do currently at least, use the computer software program BSNA to record their findings and to keep track of complaints and concerns and resolutions of those concerns. So I wanna be clear about that as well. The previous mayor asked about the Hayes-Jones Center, that had been sold by the city years ago to one private owner. That private owner had listed that property for sale, but that property was sold to another private owner before any of us came into office earlier this year, and that new private owner has not listed that property for sale, and has not expressed any interest or willingness, that I'm aware of anyway, to sell that property, just to be clear about the status of the Hayes-Jones Center. I also wanted to speak briefly to Ms. Wilson's situation. This is a situation that, as many speakers tonight have expressed, is a very serious situation. I share all of the concerns about Ms. Wilson that have been expressed. I've been in touch with concerned citizens and residents about that situation, and yesterday I spoke, again, as I have in the past, with the prosecutor's office about that situation. I know that Councilman Nicholson already addressed the question about whether she is still incarcerated in the Oakland County Jail, but as of yesterday, in my conversation with the prosecutor's office, she was in fact still incarcerated in the Oakland County Jail. Part of the issue, in addition to many other concerns that have been expressed, is that the prosecutor's office at least, has not received documentation that she has been diagnosed in the past with a mental illness, or has been treated in the past with a mental illness. So if her family is watching, please share that documentation with her attorney, who can then share it with the prosecutor's office. I understand that currently she has a publicly appointed attorney, and it, it sounded from some comments tonight, like, that Ms. Wilson herself may not be communicating much with that attorney, but I encourage her family members, if you have documentation of her being diagnosed or treated with a mental illness, please get that in the hands of Ms. Wilson's attorney, so that she can get it in the hands of the prosecutor's office. There was another question raised about the emergency preparedness plan for our community. There has been a plan in place, but it is, has not been updated in a number of years, and so we are currently working on updating that plan, and when we finalize that, we will get information about that out to the general public. It's a very, very important point, and as the hurricane down in Florida may have reminded many of us, natural disasters, among other forms of disaster, do happen, and although we're fortunate not to have to deal with hurricanes here in Michigan, we obviously have tornadoes here, and we have a number of other forms of disasters that can strike. So it's very important, to, to the point that was raised by the community leader, that we have an updated emergency preparedness plan in place, and we have been working on that. And then lastly, I do wanna thank everybody who came out for our State of the City address. So last Thursday, I wanna thank all seven members of council for being there, that certainly meant a great deal to me, but we also had about 400 members of the public who were there in person at the crowfoot between the main room, along with overflow rooms that were set up as well. So I really appreciate so many members of the public coming out in person. Of course, you can view that on the city's public access channel, and I believe it's still out there on Facebook and on some other social media as well. But again, many, many thanks to members of the community for your interest in the address and for coming out in great numbers to hear it.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Grimaldi. At this time, Clerk Doyle, any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned last week, absentee ballots were mailed out on September 29th. If you submitted your application prior to September 29th, you should have received your ballot in the mail, or you'll be receiving it this week. We mailed over 4,800 ballots out last week, Thursday, so your ballot should have, you should have received, you should receive your ballot this week, if you've not already received your ballot. And with that being said, you can return your ballot by mail, or to one of our six secure ballot drop boxes, or directly to the clerk's office. You can now also vote in person in the clerk's office, now through Monday, November 7th, at 4:00 PM. As stated earlier, the clerk's office cannot tell you how to vote, but we can do voter education, so we can explain what a proposal contains, we just cannot tell you whether to vote yes or no on a proposal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, sir. District One, oh, I'm sorry, District Two closing comments, Mr. Councilman Brent Nicholson.
Thank you. Wanted to give some updates. This Thursday is going to be a busy day in District Two, as we've been looking for contractors for our community projects, and I did give a shout-out to MG Construction. They are coming out on Thursday to do some sketches of the end of Winona Street, as well as Indian Village Park. We are looking at putting a retaining wall at the front of Indian Village Park, replacing the peg fence that's there. Clearly, it's a park that butts right up to M59. Clearly, it's a park that butts right up to M-59, so kids playing in that park could jump right through that fence, so we want to put something a little bit more suitable there. That's one of our community projects, so we'll be getting some ideas from them, and then submitting those, of course, to the proper departments here at the city, so they can take a look at those and make sure that they are suitable. At the end of Winona Street, you know, this is a dead end that butts right up to the Voorhees and Telegraph intersection. When people are going down Winona Street, if you have somebody that's not familiar with the neighborhood, the curb is about this thick, they could just go right into that intersection, and I'm sure it's happened. I haven't seen it, but I'm sure it's happened. So, we're looking at putting some nice Bullard-style planters there, and the Ottawa Hills neighborhood has already assembled a group of individuals, thank you Renee Polrath, that it will be looking at gardening those and keeping those up. As it relates to gardening, I want to thank the Water Resource Commission. They have been very helpful in restoring water to the Seminole Hills Historic Gardens. We have a plumber who is coming out to planters and meters. We do have to widen those wells, which is why it's taken us so long. The wells aren't just not large enough to add the extra equipment, and so we're going to widen the wells. They're working on that also on Thursday. So, that's moving along as well. Want to give an update about Miami Street and the goings-on over on Miami Street. There is a house that we've been working with the landlord to secure. There is a good amount of transient folks that have been coming in and out of this house. There is no lease that anyone holds, no certificate of occupancy. The landlord is a tender-hearted gentleman that really wants to make sure those people are taken care of. Our Oakland County Sheriff's Department, thank you to Lieutenant Hicks and his willingness to come out with a social worker to help that landlord be able to secure the property, but also offer services and opportunities for the people who have been coming and going from that property. We are in the final stages of nailing down when that date will be. We're just making sure that the social worker is available, and we'll be over at that property, securing that property to make sure that the comings and goings die down on Miami Street. We'll also be making sure that that property remains secure as we move forward. The Building and Safety Department has been helpful in ensuring that no permits are given to that property until it's fully secured, and that is in interest. The property owner does want to make improvements to that property, so on all sides, we have some skin in the game, so that's really good. So, thank you in that, in that way. We want to give a shout-out. I know last week I talked very briefly about Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. We are in the air of Yom Kippur. Yom Kippur is the Day of Atonement, so we're starting our New Year out in a way that's meaningful, that we've addressed all of our issues from the year before and able to move forward in a way that's thoughtful and meaningful. So, to any of our Jewish residents, I want to say, may our name be inscribed in the Book of Life for good, and have a meaningful and safe fast.
To City Councilwoman Miguel Goodman, he's younger than us.
You know, I do take some offense to other people who are older than me mentioning how young I am, but I digress. I will say, I have had a better week than most. Just a couple of things I want to highlight. To answer the question from one of the residents earlier, I can't answer to you who has what amount remaining, because it's dependent upon how much was spent during the previous calendar year in which we took office. So, the person that you are inquiring about, you'd have to ask each individual councilperson what that amount is, because I simply do not know. And to another residence's point, in the Breast Cancer Awareness Resolution, it does mention both men and women in the resolution, because that is a very important thing. So, it is in there, just so you know. I will say personally, I'm extremely happy to have the lights on Kennead working again. It is very difficult driving home every night in pitch blackness, going up both Baldwin and Kennead, and I'm still working with DPW, and it's been, already been discussed about trying to get some more of the lights back on between what would be Johnson Street and Mount Combe, but I'm very happy to have Kennead now lit. It's a very safe drive home now, opposed to having to have my highs all the way down the road. And I do definitely want to speak to the homicide that happened in my district, because there are a lot of details that I still have not been made aware of in terms of what happened on High Street. But I think it still goes to talk about the place where we are in a community where there are a lot of things that we still have to work on to address the conditions of people that lead them down, whatever life of crime that it may be. Because when we look at these things, they can occur for many different reasons, whether it be situational and financial, all the way to confrontation and not knowing what real problem and conflict resolution is. But the first and foremost thing that we, as a community, have to do is, again, look at prevention. Look at trying to stop these things before they happen, because the recourse is not continuing to have these conversations after someone loses their life, but in doing everything we can to prevent it from happening in the first place. So, first, really first and foremost, my heart goes out to the family who has now lost someone in their, their family and their relatives and friends. But I also really want to highlight for all of us, especially those of us who helped govern the city, is that I think that we really need to, you know, while we're having the conversation about crime, really talk about what it means to address the conditions and, you know, address the problems that lead to decisions that make crime. Because if, I believe if we do that, we will begin to truly address the problems that we are facing as a community, as it relates to this issue, but many other issues that affect us in the city and the things that we try to fight for and change every single day. But with that, I do say goodnight.
Thank you, sir. District Four, trust God's timing, the great City Councilwoman Kathleen James.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Okay, I think the most exciting news for District Four was made by our mayor, Mayor Grimal, at his State of the City, when he announced that Pontiac has signed a joint agreement with Oakland County that would allow them to take over, not take over the park, but take over the maintenance part of Hawthorne Park. Oakland County has committed to invest over 1.5 million into Hawthorne Park, which is located in District Four. We are looking forward to hopefully seeing those bathrooms reopen. We are looking forward to seeing the lake out there that is overwhelmed with invasive cattails cleaned up, and to really have that place, that park, a place where everyone wants to go and recreate. So, we're very excited about those plans and that announcement that was made. That also will allow, because the administration plans to use part of our opera dollars for parks, to upgrade parks in the city, and I think the mayor talked about that as well. So, that will, with Oakland County's commitment of 1.5 million to go into Hawthorne, which is our largest park, it's a community park, then it's going to leave monies for us to be able to focus on those remaining parks. Cherry Lawn Park, which is right there in the middle of a very difficult community, low-income community, and that park really, really could use some upgrade and some work. And also, we have JC Park that we would like to see, you know, some monies put into and, you know, to make that park what we really want it to be. So, I'm very excited, and I think that the residents of everybody that I've talked to are very excited about seeing, about what we hope to see happening at Hawthorne Park. Also, I've got a comment on Ms. Wilson that has come up quite a bit this, tonight. Obviously, we are very, all very concerned about that situation. I agree with much of what has been said. To me, it was very obvious that this was a mental health call that went awry, and tragically awry, and that it's, it's a very disturbing thing that this woman is still in jail and under very serious problems and serious charges that are against her because of her mental condition. But if there is a good part, it's that this lady is finally getting the attention that she deserves because she needs help. And I think from the city's standpoint, we have not said a lot, because we have been waiting on the, when the police, when the Oakland County Sheriff's were here, there was supposed to be a full investigation into the incident, and we have been waiting on that report. To my knowledge, we have not received it, and so we've been waiting, you know, in order to go a step further on what that final report would say. But regardless of what it says, this was a mental health issue. Bottom, bottom line, mental health issue should have been mental health from the first moment to the last, and it got off, and I think that's our concern. My concern is, we don't really have a good process for how we handle these kinds of mental health emergencies. There are not a lot of resources out there for people who are in mental health emergencies, and these are things that, as a community, we are going to have to work on. It's, it's great to get up to the podium and say what's not, what hasn't been done, and we need, and beat people up, but let me tell you something. To fix these kinds of problems, you need to sit down at the table and you need to work through them. And in order to do that, we have got to work together. We have got to pull together as a city. These are serious problems, and so they're not going to be solved by people snapping their finger. They're going to be solved by people like the council, like the administration, making the hard decisions on what we need to do to fix these problems, and they do have to be made. I think the other thing that we're waiting on, I saw, there was a video on, I believe it was on Facebook, showing the actual court appearance of Ms. Wilson before Judge Cynthia Thomas, and Judge Thomas did, Judge, excuse me, Judge Walker did, excuse me, thank you. She did determine that this lady needed a full evaluation for mental health. That was ordered, and, because I watched it, and she gave some direction to her attorney, but you could see that, you know, she was nonverbal, for the most part, with her, with her attorney. So, the second thing we need to find out is, has that mental evaluation been completed? And if so, you know, what were those results? So, there are some, there are some information pieces that, as a council, we need to get our hands around, those two things. The final report from Oakland County Sheriff, and whatever the mental health evaluation that was ordered by Judge Cynthia Walker. So, once those two pieces of information are in, then I think, as a council, we can move forward to what we would think would be the next step. So, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Parker, District Five.
Thank you, brother President Pro Tem. It has been said that hurt people hurt people, but heal people heal people. Obviously, if you've listened to our council meetings, there are a lot of people who have been hurt by something, and they come and express themselves. And there's been a lot of people, even on the council now, that has been hurt by people, and they express themselves. One of the things I've learned in life is neither is conducive to good relationships. Hurt people hurt people, but heal people heal people. And so, for those of you who may need some healing, I take you to item 13 on our agenda today, the Impact Adverse Childhood Experiences Training, as well as the Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice, which we'll be doing a class on the 7th of October, 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. They're going to deal with emotional hurt. I don't know what caused the hurt. I pray I didn't cause the hurt, but I do know there are people who need healing in this city. Please come out and try to get yourself healed and possibly get some information as to how to heal those around you. I want to thank my pastor, Pastor James H. Keys, for showing up to pray this evening. He was a little bit late, but he did get here. I want to thank, I want to thank Sister, Pastor Emeritus Kathy Deserot, who always comes, and she's always my backup when other people don't show up, because occasionally we do have people who, for whatever reason, don't come when we ask them to. So, I want to thank her for praying this evening. I want to say to those in District Five, I get two types of call, those who leave messages and those who don't leave messages. For those who have left messages, I documented the message. If it required a response from DPW or code enforcement, it was sent to an email to them, and either they or myself have responded. If all you did was call and you didn't leave a message, I just presume you didn't have anything to talk about, and I'm waiting for you to call me back. That being said, I just want to say, you know, as we try to move forward, I often tell my church, many hands make light work. It's easy to complain about a problem, but it takes concerted effort to fix a problem. If you have a problem, and I always tell them this, it's good that you have a problem, but bring a solution with the problem. If we sit down and talk about it and discuss it, I'm sure we can come up with a viable solution to everybody's problem that exists in this city. It won't, it won't be resolved overnight, but I do know it will be resolved. As I said, many hands make light work. Hurt people hurt people, but heal people heal and help people. And with that, I'll say, good evening, Pontiac.
Thank you, sir. "It's always seems impossible until it is done." That's a powerful quote. I'd just like to thank the 6th District for all the feedback that I received over this last past week concerning the neighborhood dedication signs. I know a few houses are pretty upset with me. I'd just like to put on the record that I didn't make those nominations. So, but I do plan to go out to those two homes and look at them myself to determine whether they deserve a sign or not. Also, all the concerns from this past week have been reported to the DBW, as well as code enforcement. I definitely won't talk about those particular addresses, but they have been reported, has been requested from the citizens of the 6th District. Also, received some very positive comments concerning the mayoral address. I just wanted to let you know that we did receive some very positive comments from that, from that event. And I'd just like to say, my prayers go out to the Wilson family. I know this is a very troublesome situation, is really tiring too, too, as a family member, because like I said, I have a sister that has been off issues, to which she's been in this particular situation over the years, in multiple situations. But I know if the family get involved, the community get involved, as well as making sure that the prosecution have exactly what they need to make a determination to, you know, to get her out of the situation she in, is that it should be, it should be done. Because, you know, me personally, I don't necessarily have the answer to the situation, but I know it's a bad situation to be in, especially if you're a family member that's seen your loved one in this particular situation. So, my prayers and the heart goes out to that particular family. Thank you. And that, I will actually call for a German. Can I get a motion for a German?
Support.
803, a motion has been called by Councilman Nicholson, I believe, Councilman Goodman, and the second was Councilman Parker for a German. Clerk Doyle, roll call.
Nicholson, yes. Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
I didn't make any mistakes, did I?
No, not at all. But I do have an update about the psychological.